Could somebody please speak so I can see if my speakers are working?
Hello? Hello?
Can you hear us? Can you hear us at all, Sina? Can you hear us now?
Okay, everybody's here. All right, Counselor. Mr. Will, are you ready to start?
Yes, Mayor Walker, we're ready.
All right, thank you. Counselor Hill, would you read us out of closed session, please?
Yes. I move that the City Council, members certified by recorded votes, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
There a second?
Second. A second?
Right. Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Thank you. So I call the regular meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Ms. Thomas, roll the call, please.
Mayor Walker?
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes, I'm here.
Counselor Hill?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Snook?
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Counselors, are there any announcements? Recognition, proclamation, Counselor Hill, would you like to read the board appointments? Oh, it's next. All right. All right, so board appointments and commission, board and commission appointments.
Yes, I move that council appoint the following to its boards and commissions. The Charlottesville Albemarle Airport Commission, Matthew Murray. The Historic Resources Committee, Jessica Livingston. The Housing Advisory Committee, Gary Palmer. The Jefferson Madison Regional Library Board, Meredith Cole. The Minority Business Commission, Antoine Brinson, and Karen Woody. The Monticello Area Community Agency Board, Georgia Garrett. Piedmont Family YMCA Board of Directors, Anne Hemmenway. The Piedmont Virginia Community College Board, Leslie Frabel. Just making sure, I have so many pages here. The Retirement Commission, David Hughes. The Sister Cities Commission, Nana Gardi. The Social Services Advisory Board, Rebecca Manning, and Zaher Shike. The Towing Advisory Board, Buzz Becker and Ashley Cullip. And the Tree Commission, Jacqueline Duggery. And the Youth Council, Nicole King.
I second that motion.
All right, Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That carries five zero. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda. One, minutes, April 19th work session, closed and regular meetings. May 3rd, closed and regular meetings, May 25th work session. Two, resolution appropriating trail fund contribution from Milestone Partners for Meadow Creek Trail, $12,043, second reading. Three, resolution appropriating Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Grant Funds, Alcohol and Impaired Driving, $9,453, second reading. Four, resolution appropriating funds for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, $23,056, second reading. Five, ordinance amending and reordaining Charlottesville City Code, Chapter 15, Article 2, Section 15-39, motor vehicles and traffic regarding electric power-assisted bicycle license, second reading. Six, ordinance amending and reordaining Charlottesville City Code, Chapter 31, utilities to establish new utility rates and service fees for city gas, water, and sanitary sewer, second reading. Seven, resolution appropriating funds for COVID homelessness emergency response program, CHIRP, grant amendment, $201,120, first of two readings. Eight, resolution appropriating funds Charlottesville Student Victim Outreach Program, Department of Criminal Justice Services Victim of Crimes Act Grant, $343,371, first of two readings. Nine, resolution appropriating funds for Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, grant for Charlottesville Albemarle Family Treatment Court Program, expanded services, $827,973, first of two readings. Ten, resolution appropriating funds for FY21 Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Body-Worn Camera Grant, $100,000, first of two readings. Eleven, resolution approving the donation of a 1948 American La France Fire Engine to the Charlottesville Professional Firefighters Association, one reading. Twelve, resolution Climate Protection Program and Local Energy Alliance Program, LEAP, service agreement. And this involves two action items. The first is a resolution reallocating previously appropriated funds in the Gas Fund, Environmental Sustainability Cost Center, to the Local Energy Alliance Program for support to the Climate Protection Program, $44,718, one reading. B, resolution establishing a memorandum of understanding between the city and the local Energy Alliance Program, LEAP, for grant funds to support the Climate Protection Program and promote energy performance improvements, one reading. Thirteen, resolution approving the Albemarle Housing Improvement Program Contingency Plan, FY2021 through 2022 Minor Annual Action Plan Amendment, one reading.
All right, thank you. I have a question about the number, is anyone on here from AHIP?
We do have Cory Demchak has raised a hand.
Okay. So I'll just wait until we, after the public comments section, but I do have a question just about the example that they used for the substantial rehab and just what is happening with, you know, that family's needs. And then, you know, Counsel, I want to, you know, do a vote on one through 12 and then 13. So, Mr. Will, we can open it up for public, if there are any public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience, you'd like to address counsel about the consent agenda, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're joining us via telephone, press star nine. And if you're on Facebook, BoxCast, or watching on our Channel 10, you need to join us at charlottesville.gov/zoom, register for the meeting, and you can get a link to participate. First up is Cory Demchak. Cory, you're on with City Council, you've got three minutes.
Brian, I had only unmuted to let staff, or let counsel know that I was here from AHIP. I don't actually have a comment right now. Sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you. Next up is Kate Fraley. Kate, you're on with City Council, and you've got three minutes.
Hi, thank you. I'm on iPad tonight, so I might have a little bit of trouble saying what I want to say. But I want to comment on Resolution Number 10 about body cameras, and I want to correct a false narrative in the background statement of that appropriation of funding. That statement says that the body-worn cameras have become even more important as they enable police officers to record events and the citizen interactions exactly as they occur and provide an impartial account to law enforcement officials and the public alike. I believe that is a false narrative about body cameras, and we know from the murder of George Floyd that it wasn't a police body camera that showed us what actually happened. I don't approve of the $100,000, and I understand that $50,000 is from the state and $50,000 is from local money. That local money, $50,000, could be much better used to support violence prevention programs in our town. Thank you.
And one last call. If you'd like to address counsel on the consent agenda, please click the raise hand icon. I don't see any additional hands, Mayor Walker.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just, I went back to that grant. I think that all, that that total $100,000 is is a grant. Am I incorrect?
It's a local match, but it's coming from already previously budgeted dollars within the city police department's budget.
Okay.
I would assume that this, these type of expenditures would happen regardless of the grant or not. But the chief is on if we want to ask her.
No, then that is. And so this purchase is not to purchase the body worn cameras, it's to purchase 12 months of the license, data licensing fees to help the department comply with the Library of Virginia Records and Retention Disposition Schedule. So that sounds like whether we approve this or not, something that CPD has to adhere to. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct. It's the licensing fees which we're required to do for records retention under the Virginia Library or the Library of Virginia mandatory. We're going to pay the $100,000 regardless. We just sought a grant to help support so that the city would not have the full responsibilities.
All right, thank you. And my only other question, and maybe we're going to get some information at some other point, but for number nine, the $827,973, is that an expansion of staff members for a family treatment court? Or do we have that information yet? I intended to send that in, and I didn't, so my apologies. Okay.
Sue Moffett's with us, Mayor Walker.
Yes, Mayor, the money is to expand the services that are currently offered. So yes, it's not only for staff that are at Region 10, that's where we, the service provider for this, for the family treatment court, but also to enhance our staff development activities.
So is that, so new staff members are going to be hired with the grant?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure if they've hired new staff members, but there'll be additional case management provided by either existing staff or an additional position. I can clarify that. There's been significant turnover in all three organizations that are part of this, and so I'm not really clear on the details, whether it's additional staff or just new services provided by existing staff.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any other questions? Oh, I have a question about AHIP. Any other questions from the other counselors? So my question was just, there was a example used that there was, I guess, a $200,000 or so substantial rehab that couldn't be completed, and then, so these funds would be used for an already, for a building that has already been approved, a house that has already been approved, but I guess costs significantly less. And I'm just wondering just what the plan is to support maybe the previous homeowners, their needs. Or, and then how was that communicated with them?
So are we able to get Mr. Demchak back up here?
Okay, his mic is enabled.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor Walker, the family in question that we had specifically mentioned in our proposal first contacted us in 2018. They had a, what was reported to us is a leaking roof. Back then, we were still doing preliminary inspections through NDS, and the inspection revealed not only a leaking roof, but severe problems due to deferred maintenance. In addition to the roof, there was issues with the foundation, the structural framing of the floor, the walls, windows, and doors. Furnace, pretty much top to bottom, wall to wall, there were issues throughout the home. We have tried to fund this project over the years. Unfortunately, Mr. Howard is no longer, the husband and wife, the husband is no longer with us, he has since passed. We've continued to try to communicate with the wife who's still living. We've put together a few proposals over the years. Unfortunately, no one funding source, given the severe dilapidation of the home is going to be enough to complete it. And this specific proposal is requesting about $100,000 out of a cost of about $250,000, so we're looking for about 40%. The recommended allocation of $38,000 is only about 15% of the total cost. And, you know, without the full allocation that we're requesting, it's just physically impossible to fund that whole project. But we have been in touch with the family along the way to let them know every time that we're seeking a new avenue of funding, to let them know at each turn that we were unsuccessful in funding the project. It's one of those things where unless you really fix everything wrong with it, the house is going to continue to fall in on itself. If you don't, if you only fix the leaking roof, you know, the foundation and all the other issues that the house is built upon are still going to be an issue. You know, if you only fix the foundation, the leaking roof will still allow water to come in from the top. So it's sort of an all or nothing proposition. I met with NDS staff back in the fall of 2019 to try to brainstorm some ideas. Mr. Ike Capuna, Mr. Werner, Liz Russell, who is currently a planning commissioner, also a board member of AHIP and a member of Preservation Piedmont, was present. And I want to say maybe two other folks, John Sales at the time, is housing coordinator. You know, so we had some really creative people in the room. We were putting our heads together. We thought we had a path forward using some CAF funds, but then the CAF had been reduced that year. So it's one of those things where, you know, the family's still on our radar, but it's really going to take the perfect storm of funding and a lot of people getting behind this project to make it work. I feel like I said a lot more than I needed to, to answer your question, but it wasn't a simple yes or no.
Yeah, no, that was. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, was there a second part about the lesser cost of the other project that I wanted to introduce as a contingency?
Yes, I just, well, my main point was just how it was communicated to the family and just what was their current state. The substantial rehab, and yeah, I may have had a question about just how much of this current family, the proposed families project, will be completed with those dollars.
Yeah, so the alternative housing project in the contingency plan, that's the rehab, total cost of about $50,000, so that 37 and change, still doesn't cover the full thing, but we're going to bring some private funds to the table and get that house taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
And if there are ever any other questions, I'm always available by email or phone. Feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselors, are there any other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
No, the one through 12 and then 13.
Oh, I'm sorry. You did mention that earlier. I move we adopt consent agenda items one through 12.
Second.
Mayor Walker?
Mayor Walker? Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries five zero.
I move that we adopt item 13, the resolution approving of the Albemarle Housing Improvement Programs Contingency Plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022 Minor Annual Actual Plan Amendment.
A second?
Mayor Walker?
No.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That carries four to one. All right, next up, we have the city manager's response to community matters and to counselors.
Thank you, Mayor Walker and counsel. A few responses from your previous
A few responses from your previous council meeting, and then a couple of other items that had been on the agenda for a while. To let you know, notices were published in mail to nearby battlefields and museums requesting interest in acquiring the two Confederate statues from the city. As of today, we've received three statements of interest. Two are in-state and one from out of state. City staff is once again working to assist the residents at Midway Manor with an outage of the working elevator there. So our housing staff has been in contact with the owners and managers of the property, trying to get that elevator repaired again. The city's question came up at the last council meeting, the city's Home to Hope program. This program of lived experience with city staff providing living support to peer individuals is currently undergoing some transition, but remains a very important growing program for the city. And Deputy City Manager for Racial Equity, Ashley Marshall, is taking the lead on continuing this program. The Department of Human Services is working with the ARP, the American Recovery Plan Final Regulations, and with continuing state rental assistance programs of both CARES and the ARP to continue our financial assistance to prevent rental evictions. City Hall and city operations continue to increase hours of operations. The state of emergency remains in effect for the city due to continued COVID cases, but with full operations expected to occur in early September, at which time all public meetings, boards and committees will begin to meet in person, if not before. The hiring continues for city operations. Our Director of NDS interviews begin this Thursday, and the Police Civilian Review Board Director interviews begin this Wednesday. Deputy City Manager of Administration resumes are being accepted through July the 2nd. And of course, there are a few other openings that we continue to work on. And that's all that I have right now.
All right. Thank you. Councilors, are there any questions? The full reopening by September 6th, that will still allow some staff members to work remotely if that, if they're directors, the leaders have determined that that works for that department?
Yes, Mayor. We're leaving that up to each of the departments based on their own workloads and operations. And that's something that we intend to go on indefinitely.
And what's the second thing you said?
The boards and commission meetings.
That wasn't it. I'm sorry.
No, okay.
But it'll come to me later. Counsel, any other questions?
I just wanted to mention, I don't know if this is being thought about or not. I'm sure it is. But if, as we start going back in person, if staff has to come, if all staff have to be in person at city council meetings, or if they could be presenting remotely to us. I just, I want to take whatever positives we can from this pandemic and provide as much flexibility as technology allows.
And we are considering that and planning for that. And again, based on what, our understanding right now is that the, in the case of city council, the elected officials will have to be physically present, but staff could do either.
And is that still a, because I would want still that as many people who didn't have to be in a room, and especially sitting close to me, to not be there. We're talking about that time of year, it's going to be flu season picking up, you know, regular colds that fall winter season. So hopefully by then, there'll be some changes to how, you know, they're looking at this from a federal and state level. But whatever we can do to support that, I would hope that we consider that. And I sent that in the email too.
We will. Thank you.
And that didn't mean that I don't think the rest of y'all should sit right next to people, but I'm sure everyone is aware of how I was pre-pandemic. So this is a real challenge for me. All right. Next up, we have the Community Matters section. We have five people preregistered, and so that'll, so we'll have 11 more slots available. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Will.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience and you'd like to get in line for Community Matters, just click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. I'm looking for the first person who signed up in advance, Tyric Mack. And I do not see that person, so I'll come back to them. The first person, second person who signed up in advance is Callie Gaston. Callie, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a downtown property and business owner with my work located equidistant from both the Lee and Jackson statues. I'm on Northeast 3rd Street. It is vitally important, as a message not just to Black people in our own community, that the statues come down at the earliest possible time. As long as they stand, they broadcast a message of intolerance, of subjugation. I ask that if the council cannot come to a final decision on their disposition, that they be stored away from the public until such a decision is made. There has been some talk about the cost of removal. The city of Charlottesville must pay for them to be removed. The city has been paying for the upkeep and maintenance for almost 100 years. It is time that money be spent to right this longstanding wrong. The city put money aside for this in 2016, and it is time to use it to bring balance. Please don't give them to just any organization offering to pay. They need to be in the hands of an organization that is trusted to speak for the whole community, one that will help shift the narrative to one that is inclusive and anti-racist. Some object to the removal of art. In the case of the Lee statue, it is bad art, and there are plenty of precedents for art being repurposed. I hope that the council will consider that the raw materials in these two statues represent an amazing opportunity for the creative process. This is an opportunity for different voices to be heard, for different stories to be told. We have a chance for the hashtag Charlottesville to come to mean something important about justice, about freedom. For it is to be something we can all be proud of. Good art can do that, can transform something negative into something that is inclusive. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my concerns.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our next registrant was Emily Yen, who I don't see on the webinar right now. I'll search back for that person. So the next person up is Roy Van Dorn, who will be followed by Tracy Hopper. Roy, you're on with city council, and you've got three minutes.
Chairman Walker and members of the city council, I'm Roy Van Dorn, speaking on behalf of the Virginia Restaurant Lodging Travel Association, the Charlottesville chapter. The ARPA was signed into law specifically to enable localities who know their local market to allocate recovery funds efficiently. Last week, I sent to each of you a detailed on sections 6001 and 9901, which outlines a recommendation that 25% of the ARPA funds be used to devoted to tourism, travel and hospitality. To help guide localities to determine industry-specific proposals, we were asked by the Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia Association of Counties to provide industry knowledge to give localities insight about how best to help the hospitality industry recover using ARPA funds. You have a copy of that presentation as well. While it's true that, starting in May, we have experienced an increase in leisure visitation, recovery is not imminent even with a broader reopening. For example, lodging, Charlottesville has just devalued hotel building assessments by over 30%. This speaks volumes about their losses. Lodging is a big investment with big debt service. It will take years of profits to pay the debt back. Almost every hotel has cut their marketing budget to nothing, and most of it will take years to repay this delayed debt. Restaurants, while several programs like PPP have helped, well-intentioned programs, including the Restaurant Recovery Fund, which is part of ARPA, did not solve our local restaurants' problems. The RRF portion of ARPA only funded 30% of those applicants who were approved. The other 70% of the restaurants here in Charlottesville got nothing. And there's a very slim chance that that will ever be refunded. Most table service restaurants are still losing money. The CACBB, with the sharp decline of TOT funds, the necessity to chart effective marketing to a post environment, post-COVID environment is critical. Many municipalities are adopting similar language as the Loud and Fairfax Plan, which I sent you as well. I urge you to consider the merits of their plans and adopt significant community recovery and delay until the next round, the City Income Recovery Funding. I would request that the Economic Development Team meets with industry as soon as possible to craft a plan for those left behind armed with a significant portion of ARPA funds. Sincerely, Roy Van Dorn, Chapter President, VRLTA.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tracy Hopper, who will be followed by Emily Yen. Tracy, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Thanks, Brian. So my name is Tracy Hopper, and I live in the city of Charlottesville. And I am before you tonight to speak about the PCRB and the ordinance that's going to come before you. And Charlottesville is at a turning point in regard to justice. It's a very exciting time. We have an opportunity to once again be a leader in the state and even nationally. The Virginia General Assembly has made it possible for localities to legally have strong civilian police oversight. Charlottesville, as you know, has a multi-year history of advocacy for a strong civilian police review board. The civilian population has a right to strong oversight of the agency that is designated to keep us safe. And the new law allows for an oversight group to, and I know you know a lot of this, I'm just, this is for the benefit of the public as well as for you, review and make recommendations on policy and review civilian complaints. Review and make recommendations on police department actions that result from complaints. Assess data and trends and make recommendations for change. Do independent investigations. Hold hearings on complaints. Subpoena records, materials and people. And this is vital for this PCRB to be anything other than symbolic, and a weak symbol at that, and to have final disciplinary authority. When a police department is fair to all civilians, follows policy, disciplines officers when the behavior is unacceptable, and most importantly, is fully transparent with the public, many of the powers of an oversight body would not have to be used to the fullest extent, even though the ordinance gives them the ability to do that. Police department transparency and willingness, willingness to have a powerful oversight board is the best avenue for trust to be deep between the police and the civilian population, especially the disproportionately impacted civilian population. And in that vein, quickly, I'll ask that your executive director and any PCRB members have lived experience from being disproportionately impacted by the police, and that they have a relationship with the communities that experience this disproportionate unfair impact. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Emily Yen. Emily, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Dr. Emily Helen Onmay Yen. I am a resident of the city of Charlottesville. I'm speaking to you this evening in support of a collective bargaining ordinance. I think that this is really vital here in the Commonwealth, which after, now that after May 1st, that municipal workers can collectively bargain. And the city of Alexandria has passed this ordinance as well as other municipalities in Northern Virginia. And I very much hope that the city of Charlottesville will take suit. I think that it's, this is just really, issue is very important. Many of our municipal workers, including the firefighters, have been frontline workers during this pandemic, have just really endured, you know, very difficult conditions. And there's, and by allowing them to collectively bargain, they're able to shape their work conditions. And I think that that would grant them dignity and respect. I mean, most fundamentally, I see that allowing workers to shape their work environment is really most fundamentally rooted in dignity and respect. And I really hope that the, as city council members, you really sort of consider about just sort of what type of example, what that you set about setting the conditions about for workers in our own backyard as we really just want to take care of our community. And I think that this is like absolutely the best way to allow them to, workers to collectively bargain and giving them this autonomy of knowing like what would work best. And just allowing them to have a voice, especially for all the service that they've given. And I really hope that passing an ordinance would really just set the tone. And also, this ordinance would really help teachers who've also been frontline workers during the pandemic. And as well as, this would also, in terms of being able, given that other municipalities in Northern Virginia have been passing these ordinances, I also think that we want to also follow suit in just thinking about teacher retention and other important issues about maintaining, being able just to keep the best teachers that we can, as well as just recognizing their service. And I, this, I believe, is a very important issue. And I hope that you're willing to support such an ordinance. The city of Alexandria's ordinance that they passed is really exemplary. Please take this into consideration moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Walker, that's the first four speakers. The first person I called is still not on the webinar at this time. So council will hear from up to an additional 12 people. If you'd like to get in line, click the raise hand icon. First person is Nancy Carpenter, who will be followed by Adrian Dent. Nancy, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you very much for the time to speak with you all this evening. I just wanted to put it.
I think I hit the wrong button. Nancy, Nancy, sorry about that.
I'm sorry. Anyway, in nine days, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that the CDC moratorium will end, and I'm expecting a tsunami of unlawful detainers to be filed, both in Charlottesville and in Albemarle County, and I'm sure in surrounding counties. A couple of things that, you know, we need to talk about is that, you know, individually, I will tell you that on June 14th, the National Low Income Housing Coalition sent a letter, not only to President Biden, but to too many other senior people, the HUD Secretary, Merrick Garland, all, you know, so on and so forth, to ask them to create a federal moratorium. One of the reasons being is there, there has been, you know, capacity issues. One of the reasons being is there, there has been, you know, capacity issues with states being able to process the Emergency Rental Assistance Fund, and that is so true in the state of Virginia. It seems like when it went from, and Mr. Boils, you probably, you know, can, can speak to this as well, when it went from local, you know, distribution of those funds to a more centralized process with one vendor for the state is just all mucked up. I mean, I've heard that there are people that have submitted applications, the documents, the landlords, the tenants, and nobody is getting that necessary funding, which is for them. All the national calls that I am on, on Wednesday, excuse me, Monday afternoons from the National Low Income Housing Coalition, talk about getting that money rapidly into the hands of tenants or landlords by lowering the barriers, the requirements to getting that funding to people to keep them home. Because one of the other things that I just read last week, or on June 11th, eviction lab put out a paper, a short paper, it was titled, Neighborhoods With Highest Eviction Rates Have Lowest Levels of COVID-19 Protection. And they looked at Lower Manhattan versus West Bronx, if some of you, you know, know New York, you know, kind of what those neighborhoods are like. They also looked at Austin, DFW, Houston, Indianapolis, South Bend, Philly, and Phoenix. And they found out that the neighborhoods, I bet that the Blue Ridge Health District looked at this as well, the neighborhoods with the highest rate of evictions had the lowest rates of COVID-19 protection. We have children that are not able to get vaccinations at this time. We have a lot of people who are on fixed incomes with immunity issues, and I really want to bring up three words, right to counsel. You said you were going to look at funding it. I think now really, you know, it's go time. If you want to, you know, cover your constituents, this is something that is desperately needed in this community, and I'll bring the same conversation to Albemarle County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adrian Dent, who will be followed by Kate Frayley. Adrian, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I have a few things I wanted to talk about. The first is with regard to the Lee and Jackson proposals for removal that I'm sure you all are receiving. I don't know if any of that is public, but I definitely want to emphasize that you consider only institutions or organizations with a history of engaging in dismantling racist narratives. It's super important as current custodians of these statues, that wherever they go, the destination be one that's, that's already established in the act of reclaiming inclusive and honest storytelling. The other item I wanted to say is about peace in the streets. I was attending the Human Rights Commission meeting, and one thing that was said by Chief Brackney with regard to the increased gun violence is that some community members are asking for increased police presence and others are requesting that that not, is not a solution. And so peace in the streets here is responding to, already in this community, to this emergent situation of, of a rise in gun violence. And they are using a model that's recognized by the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform. Their approach uses credible messengers with lived experience. And I think I would ask that you either amend their requests for a greater amount or identify other funding sources or some combination of both. Additionally, the, overall, the, the organization, conscious capitalists are, have already, are already on the ground doing great work in, so, in juvenile justice reform and building relationships and transforming, enabling transformation of lives and youth. And so I would ask that you fully fund their requests and additionally look for other assets that could be allocated. And finally, I wanted to say thank you to everyone, and there are so many names, but Andrea Douglas at the Jefferson African American Heritage Center and all the numerous others who created an event for the community around Juneteenth. And it's, it's a tradition that's been going on in, in this community for a while, but I think it's becoming more and more visible to, I'll speak for myself as a white woman, the white community. And unfortunately, my Vimeo froze, but there's a Vimeo video that's just exquisite and speaks very strongly about protecting this holiday from the propaganda of history falsifying the narrative and adulterating it and diluting it as it becomes a national holiday. So I wanted to say thank you to everybody who organized that, and also I appreciate the warning and the cautionary recommendation that we not correct something that is wholly beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one hand raised at the moment. It's Kate Frayley. If you'd like to get in line, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Kate, you're back on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak about the police oversight board. The oversight board is not, is, sorry, community members want their complaints investigated, and they want their complaints investigated by an oversight board that is independent from the police department. The police department has demonstrated a poor track record just this year of internal affairs investigations. An ex-officer had to be convicted of a crime just for the department to fire him. The department had previously cleared him of any wrongdoing. A judge convicted him. The police cleared him. This case shows the need for non-law enforcement to be reviewing the complaints. If the oversight board had investigated, investigated it, it could have used all the evidence gathered to pinpoint what police policies led the police to exonerate the now ex-officer. I'd like to speak to another point. An ordinance will become before you, city council, soon for a vote. The ordinance is based on the General Assembly legislation, which was screened by lawyers of the General Assembly for its ability to hold up in court. This local ordinance is being developed through the very hard work of the current police civilian review board, who has had assistance from NACA, the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, also the lawyer hired by Charlottesville for the PCRB, also Charlottesville city lawyers, also the legal aid justice center lawyers, also the previous PCRB members, and also many people in the public who have been watching and encouraging this evolution. I feel certain that the ordinance that will come before you for a vote is legal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any more hands right now, but you know how my luck is on this front. If you'd like to get in line quickly, please do so. Click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. We've heard from seven speakers thus far. I knew he was out there. Don Gathers, you're on the city council, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. We know the, the flashpoint in the lightning rod that, that those statutes are represented here to our particular community. So I just ask that as you move forward with the decision as to where they may, may go once they leave here, that you really, keep in mind that we don't, we don't place that, that possibility of the same thing, the same trauma and torture and tormenting on another community anywhere else. I just ask that you really give that some, some, some real thought and consideration as you move forth through your deliberations and decisions. As Ms. Carpenter said, we're facing a groundswell of, at least a potential of a groundswell of, of evictions unless someone steps up and takes, takes the lead on that and then says, no, we're not doing it. And if we're, if we're going to talk about and continue to, to grasp at the true liberal community, then we really need to consider getting behind the collective bargaining for, for local staff and employees. That's all I have tonight. Thank you all so much. God bless you each and every one.
Thank you.
Next up is Marcia Guyer. Marcia, you're on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I sent a word that there is a Jim Crow museum that has, is for the purpose of showing objects that have been used to the detriment of African Americans. I sent that to Heather, who I believe has sent it to Mr. Boils, the city manager. So there is somewhere it could go if they wanted them, and I hope that is being pushed now, now I'm making it public to the rest of council, if you didn't already know, and to whoever is listening. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Yes, I did shoot at Mr. Boils, but I do believe that anyone who, we would still have to have a, a communication from any source that would want to have interest in this directly, reach out in the, in the same manner that others have to express interest. That's, that is a loose end that I understand.
Mayor Walker, I don't see any other hands.
Counselors, any comments?
City manager talked about this briefly in the response to matters for the public. Could you cover again some of like the plan for the money available to help evictions as that moratorium ends at the end of this month?
Sure. And I'm, look to see if perhaps our Director of Human Services may be on. But yes, we are, that is one of the requests in our American Rescue Plans. We're currently taking internal requests from all of our departments. So we do have some funding that I'm sure will be coming to you with that package. We're also monitoring the state as they receive their ARP funds. But as Ms. Carpenter said, the state is quite slow in how it administers its funds, and we have found that it does not get out as fast as it did when it was being administered locally, which is a very, very big hurdle to overcome. But yes, with the ARP funds, we do have a request in that that will be coming to you.
Oh, go ahead.
When sort of like the, a possible timeline for when that allocation could be made, given the timeline of when the eviction moratorium ends?
Can I add to that? Because that was part of my, part of my comment, and since based on the information that we have, that we received earlier, I mean, I think this is one of those items where if we can pull from somewhere else to just make sure that this is, you know, that the, because I know we were deciding between the Central Virginia Legal Aid or Legal Aid, like, I mean, I think those were part of the considerations, but if they can know that that funding is already present instead of having to wait, because we are looking now into July 19th as the earliest for a first reading and the first meeting in August as a second. All right.
Yes, and, and I see Kaki is on, but yes, that is, I, I believe that for some of these, these programs that really can't wait much longer, that we can have you some recommendations on the 18th. Because these funds aren't appropriated yet, it will take a public hearing and a second reading.
So that's what, so, and like, would this be a good use of reserves? Like, could we consider, because we talked about the amount during the Cures funding allocations, right, for the eviction? Was that during budget or during the Cures money conversation? I don't.
I think it was during budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and it would, even, even to approve that would save two weeks, would be about the earliest that, because it would still have to come back to you at your next meeting.
Okay, those two, so that's something I think maybe we should think about.
We, we've got them on the list. We certainly do.
Kaki, what are you going to share? Okay. All right, any, the only other comment I had was that this, Ms. Frayley, consistently, this conversation around body worn cameras keeps coming up, and I don't, it's not something that I'm hearing from a lot of people. I don't know, and I understand that, you know, what happened in terms of the murder of George Floyd and that it was a bystander's camera, but we can't always count on the bystander's camera, and I don't know why we wouldn't want the officers. I understand that whoever is looking at it, you may not trust what they claim they're looking at, but at least it exists for a record. And I'm sure anything can be manipulated with technology, but it's highly unlikely that if that is going through a court system, that that information couldn't be helpful to something. So I'm, I don't know how we got to, to the conversation where we're trying to expand access to, you know, items to be able to review police behavior in certain incidents that we got to a point of having a conversation about eliminating body cameras. So definitely just wanted to make that comment for the, you know, rest of the community to maybe start chiming in on that, because it seems to be a, you know, something that she's pissed in about. Yeah. And Juneteenth, yes, that was the only other, that was a, that again, Ms. Maxine Holland put together a virtual experience, just really to just recap the past 21, well, 19 years. Last year, we didn't have one, and this year was virtual, and then they did planned event at the Jefferson School. But there's some really good information in that presentations from over the years where Mrs. Turner, who's no longer with us, Ms. Holland, and then once we started celebrating at the Jefferson School, you know, that information. And in the online video, my, you know, kid is playing saxophone, one of them, another one is playing piano. So it's a lot of years that we've been participating in that, and it's, it's important, what Adrian said about make, these holidays, we talk about this around, you know, Martin Luther King Day, where we only hear the message, one of King's message, and just the whitewashing of it and what people are comfortable with this plan, you know, and talking about with Dr. King. And so that's, when people are saying, don't let this become that, those are the type of things that they're saying. Let the holiday be, you know, celebrated, but don't feel the need to eliminate the foundation of it, you know, for comfort or make it your own. And so hopefully, and it's another thing that the city was ahead of the state and federal government on, and so it's, I know a lot of those things were, you know, seeming as if it was meaningless at the time, but it does make a really big difference for people to see themselves honored and to see dates and events of historical significance honored that honors them on calendars. Again, there's a Facebook post that's going around, and I'm sure it's going around on other social media platforms. Again, there's a Facebook post that's going around, and I'm sure it's going around on other social media platforms where it's, you're skipping over a major chunk of other things. Voting Rights Act, you know, housing, you know, eliminating race, structural racism, and you step to celebrating a, you know, honoring a holiday, getting a day off. And so there's frustration even in that too. And hopefully in this community, we are committed to continuing the deeper work and not just the symbolic work.
Mayor Walker, I just wanted to mention that David Dillahun, on our team, worked with Maxine Holland on that video. And whatever his prediction was on how long it would take, I think it was 10 times longer because she brought in a pile of VHS tapes and DVDs that all had to be digitized. But I know he enjoyed the project and I'm glad it turned out well.
No, David, thank you. And anybody who's worked with Ms. Holland understands that it is a, like, she is on it and she is, it took me a long time to record the intro and I know that she was not happy with my delay. But every time we talk, which was a frequent reminder for me to do my part and to look at, you know, other stuff that she was including, she praised David, just, you know, the thoughtfulness and his patience with her and understanding that sometimes it required a lot and that, you know, he was really thoughtful about all of, you know, the contributions and it really wouldn't have been able to do the three hours had he not invested significant amount of time. So yes, thank you very much for that. Any other comments? Okay. All right. And so we're at 7:36. So I think we could probably get through this next one and then we'll break after that. So we have an action item, public hearing resolution approving a lease of city property to the Virginia Discovery Museum, Inc. It's one reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. David Brown, Director of Public Works, and as presented, presented for the city council is a resolution for lease of city property to the Virginia Discovery Museum. The Virginia Discovery Museum, VDM, is located at 524 East Main Street. Its current lease expires at the end of this month on June 30th. The VDM provides the children of the area an opportunity to discover the historical natural world around them. They offer many free and low cost outreach programs and addressing the needs of underserved, underserved children in our community. The proposed lease is consistent with the spirit of past agreements. It would provide for a five year period. And the resolution authorizes the city manager to execute the lease agreement according with terms and conditions set forth in the attached document. For city council's consideration, we request that a public hearing be held for this matter and then take the appropriate action authorizing the city manager execute the attached agreement. All right. Present for any questions the city council may have.
All right, thank you. Counselors, are there any questions at this time? All right. Mr. Willoughby will open it up for the public hearing.
If you'd like to speak to counsel about the Virginia Discovery Museum lease, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Jessica Phillips is on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jessica Phillips and I am the Vice Chair and Legal Counsel for the Board of the Virginia Discovery Museum. And I just wanted to let counsel know that I'm here, present for the meeting in case any particular questions came up that I could answer.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to address counsel, please click the raise hand icon. I see no other hands.
All right. So we'll close the public hearing. Are there any other questions? No? All right. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the resolution for the lease of city property to the Virginia Discovery Museum Incorporated.
I'll second that.
All right. Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snup?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries five zero. All right. All right, let's just keep going. So next up, we have a public hearing resolution for appropriating fiscal year 2021 supplemental federal funding for transit capital and operating assistance. The amount is $5,038,344 and this would be the first of two readings.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Council. This is Garland Williams, Director of CAT. This is our normal allocation that we get from the state in our federal funding. What we have is a combination of capital and operating dollars. The capital is $4.32 million, which will allow us to buy rolling stock, which means buses, support vehicles and additional, whether it's our APCs, which is our automated passenger counters for, for all of our buses, Bobcats and support operations, support items for operations. Also, there's some operating dollars that will, is a pass through from us to grant as a sub recipient, which is $634,000. And then there's $11,886 for CAT. This is our normal allocation and it allows us to accept and appropriate it so we can actually begin the purchase of our capital items.
All right. Thank you. Counselors, any questions?
Are these 11, just out of curiosity, are these 11 buses adding additional capacity or are they just replacing like buses that are part of like an aging fleet?
The majority of them are replacement. There are two new additional vehicles. I'm sorry, four additional new vehicles that will be in the model.
Okay, thank you.
And so the staff, do we have the staff to support or is this a, are you, will you be hiring new staff members?
What you, as a part of council's, when council adopted the budget.
That's been considered, okay.
Yep, you already added 10 additional full time positions allowed.
But some of those were the conversion from the temporary, right, to the full time?
There's, there's 10 additional full time positions that we added and then we are converting some of our temporary positions to permanent part time. There's 10 there's also.
Okay. All right.
I just have a quick, so in understanding that when you're buying a bus, it usually takes about two years from the time of purchase to when you actually get it. With these new buses coming in, we won't be, I'm assuming they haven't been ordered yet since we haven't approved.
That's correct. We can't order until you allow us to do so. So once this happens, we will probably put in an order more than likely the end of July, early August, after we finish the boilerplate and making adjustments to because every one of our vehicles are made to order, so they're not sitting on a lot. So, and then we need to figure out where we're going to get in line. It takes usually between 18 and 24 months for us to get a vehicle in.
The question that I have, I think I've raised this before, is I understand that right now, of course, all of our, all of our vehicles are diesel. And that if we look five years down the road, actually, if we look one year down the road, the experts tell us that cars bought next year, you should be, if you're buying a new vehicle, you should be buying electric rather than gas because the, the cost curves are changing so dramatically. How are the cost curves changing with respect to electric buses? And are we at the point where it's worth saying, gee, we should be buying electric?
The cost curves are changing, not as fast as it is on the personal vehicle side of the house. We are actually, we've undertaken a study that will allow us to see whether we're gonna, whether we should be looking at doing, whether it's, you know, CRG vehicles or electric vehicles or a combination of the two. The electric vehicle component for transit is coming and it's coming quickly, but it's relatively new. So there's not a lot of transit agencies and there's not a very good track record at this point. I do believe in two years, three years, we will have what, I mean, an established track record would allow us to potentially purchase. Once the study is done, we'll have also the validation that we need to go and ask for additional funds from the state or the Fed to change our fleet over. So I think, you know, it gives us a little time and we'll be able to tell you whether we think that the model works for Charlottesville at this, at this time. But we definitely know five, seven, maybe even 10 years from now that, you know, it will be some alternative fuel vehicle, whether it's, you know, fuel cells or electric vehicles, it will be something, we will get away from the diesel model in probably five to 10.
If we end up getting CNG vehicles, how much infrastructure do we have to buy and put in, in what is clearly a transitional technology?
I wouldn't say transitional technology. So I can appreciate that it is older technologies, but it's technology that works. And one of the things you're, you're asking me to do is when we're, when I make a recommendation to council, I need to make sure that the vehicles that we buy are reliable. Because reliability is a key component for us. Trying to make sure that people are willing and want to take transit. If we have vehicles that continue to break down or, you know, have to be pulled to be recharged or what have you, then it doesn't allow us to be reliable. So we're, we're working through that model. We think, I know that CNG works. I come from a transit system, just two years removed that has, you know, they're pretty much 97% CNG. So it's reliable and it's not going anywhere anytime soon.
I guess I'm just curious, maybe, maybe this is something we'll have to find out from the study, but how much, how much is it going to cost us to gear up for a CNG technology that we don't now have? We're going to need an entire infrastructure for that. And if you're just talking about going to CNG when you don't expect that to be the prevailing technology, say, five or 10 years down the road. I'm just wondering whether you know how much it's going to cost us that we're eventually going to have to replace again.
Well, technology continues to evolve. The CNG model, whether, depends on, you know, what level of CNG fueling stations that we put in. All of, all of our capital items are supported by federal or state dollars. So the cost to the city is fairly minimal. Whether it can be as low as 4%, you know, or as high as 25%. But the, the, the combination of, you know, putting in the infrastructure that's going to happen, whether, regardless of whether we do CNG, whether we do electric vehicles or air fuel cells, there will be a capital component that we'll have to work through. I, at this point, I don't see where the state hasn't made a, made a choice of, you know, saying that you aren't allowed to buy CNG vehicles anymore. The CNG model works, it's reliable, it provides the power that we need with the topography we have here. We will see whether it, you know, the topography issues here will kind of relegate EV vehicles to one or two particular routes. And if that's the case, then we can't, you know, put it in as a, you know, a full model everywhere. But the study will allow us to, to kind of get a feel for whether, you know, the infrastructure that's necessary and whether we are able to, you know, pull it out as a, as a permanent model for us right now, until the technology gets a little better.
So just be curious, when is the study that you're talking about going to be completed? I take it that's the study to decide which technology to go with?
Where the study is looking at whether it's possible to use CNG and EV vehicles here. The study hasn't started. We're finishing up the scope now. We're hoping to have the scope finished in about two to three weeks. And then we'll be able to kind of put it out and get us a consultant to, to start the study. We anticipate the study is probably going to take the four to six months to get it done. And then we'll have what we would need to make our case to the state and the feds to look at potential of changing our model over and asking for additional funding because there's a gap between what's funded at the state level right now for whether it's a diesel vehicle or a CNG vehicle for an EV vehicle. I know they're, they're changing the model and I suspect the model will probably change here fairly, fairly soon. But, you know, it'll allow us an opportunity to kind of figure out, you know, what's the best model for, for Charlottesville.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This, this funding, however, is for diesel, correct?
That's correct.
As we haven't had that study yet, we haven't had the backup for whether the various alternative energies might be useful here. For right now, this particular, or this particular piece that we're voting on tonight will be for diesel vehicles.
Diesel vehicles, the 26 footers are actually bad. So we do have four gas, five gas vehicles in our fleet. Those are the smaller vehicles that we use. Now, it could say, you know, the study could look at, that's the, that's the sweet spot for us for conversion over. Maybe we concentrate, you know, adding some more of those to our fleet and use those as a CNG model. They're very reliable and efficient. And it provides us a longer timeframe as, as far as mileage is concerned and wear and tear on the vehicles. But there's, there's a lot to be looked at and I think the study will help us to kind of move through that model. But this is primarily for those four gasoline vehicles and diesel vehicles. And when the decision is made to move for with any alternative, it would come to council specifically stating which type of vehicle that we're purchasing.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, okay. Do we have the public hearing? That's the kind of day I'm having. No, right. Okay. Mr. Willoughby, could you open up for the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you'd like to speak about the federal funding being appropriated for Charlottesville's transit system, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Each speaker will get up to three minutes. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thanks. And then this will move to the July 19th consent agenda.
Real quickly, in the spirit of highlighting positive things, it's a small thing in there, but I know the automatic passenger counters are a really integral piece to allowing us to get to fare free more permanently. So just want to highlight that because I know that continues to be a huge goal for everyone.
Well, the other highlight I think is the newer buses should be more efficient, right? And use less fuel, maybe. I mean, that's what usually happens with newer versus older. So there is some advantages, even if we are not changing sources.
Also, adding four buses will hopefully increase route time, I mean, decrease route times and potentially increase routes down the road. All again, making a more robust and usable transit.
Well, we found a lot of positives. Okay. All right, thank you. So how is everyone for, do we want the break or want to keep going?
Press on. Press on. We're almost there.
All right. All right, next up, we have we can do 16 and um, we can do sixteen and seventeen. We have appropriating funds for the Conscious Capitalist Foundation Peace in the Streets program off cycle budget request. Um, first of two readings um for fifty thousand dollars. And then we have appropriating funds for the Conscious Capitalist Foundation, fifty thousand dollars first of um two readings. We'll turn it over.
I think you're turning it over to me. This is CAC academic director of human services. Uh, and I'm happy to present both of these requests. These are out of cycle requests um that came directly to council. One is responding to the need for uh community-based responses to the increase of gun violence. Um, and so Conscious Capitalist Foundation is making both of these requests tonight. The first program, the request is for a hundred and forty five thousand dollars for a program they call Peace in the Streets, which uses a credible messenger's um uh approach to um building relationships um and providing uh authentic uh building authentic relationships and providing services to folks who need them in the community. Um, the credible messenger approach has been uh associated with positive outcomes, including uh increased engagement in services and programs, reductions in rearrest and violations, increased compliance with court school conditions and improved collaborations between system stakeholders. Uh, the Peace in the Streets program, it has not been around for very long, but in its short life, it has developed a positive relationship with many people in the community, particularly folks who have a significant confidence in their structured model for de-escalation. Uh, on the call today, we have Rob Gray, Derek Rush and Nicholas Fagans from Conscious Capitalist Foundation. Should you have any additional question? Do you want to tackle these independently or talk about them together?
Yeah, we could do it independently, but I just didn't want to have to stop and read in again.
Okay, so the first the first request is for a hundred and forty five thousand dollars for Peace in the Streets, a response to gun violence.
And, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, this this request is more of a stretch if we wanted to look at other funding sources such as A R P. Is that correct, Mister Micker?
Yes, the as as you all have heard, as the A R P funds get sort of clarified with every new round of guidance, um, they're getting actually significantly um sort of tighter than the CARES Money Act, CARES Act money was. And so uh there is a requirement to tie the the activity back to specifically to COVID and to be able to talk about how uh COVID impacted that. And I think uh having conversations with staff, I think we have a harder time making that connection to the increase in gun violence um than we do, for example, to mentoring um young people who are um disaffected and and disconnected from school and having trouble um sort of in a more sort of community-based way. I think it's easier to tie that to concerns around mental health, which is reasonable to tie to COVID. So it's a little bit harder to make that argument for the gun violence piece.
But with the increase just around the country, a lot of of the conversations around it surrounding it has been like during the COVID timeframe, even in places um even where there's been gun violence before, just even more than usual. So how I'm wondering how just because in our community, I think it's um whether it's tied to COVID or not, trying to figure out how we fund because we do need to figure out how to decrease and to get people in healthier places. Um, which the other initiative related to juvenile justice that is, again, a age group that we want to target, but we are talking older members of the community, um some here too, and of course, we know younger members too.
I feel confident that I can make a very persuasive argument that both gun violence and a disconnection from school are related to increased stress and increased um uh sort of decreased community resilience and decreased um sort of general mental health. And that tie that back to economic conditions caused by COVID um and COVID itself, the sort of wrestling with the national mortality. I I am not, however, as as comfortable saying that that would be a an argument that would be persuasive to the feds, since I haven't been reading that art that um that I haven't been reading the ranks. And so the Budget Office would have to weigh in on doing that. But I agree, I think it's a public health condition, just like uh other public health conditions.
Yeah, and even if if not tying it back to the poten- the future funding that we'll be allocating, how what options do we have within the city to consider expanding the funding? And so that's what I'm asking more than anything, even if they are not linking the two um with their restrictions. Um, Mister Gray, Mister Rush, would you all like to share?
Yeah, good evening, counsel. Yeah, I just wanted to say that there's a direct correlation between um both the youth we serve, the demographic um for the youth we serve, and also the adult uh adult population. Um, so if you look at gun violence, it's definitely, you know, picked up during um during the pandemic. And if you if you take a uh pretty critical look at it, you'll see that some of the some of the youth we're working with, even at the uh at the detention center uh at Blue Ridge, like a lot of these youth are locked up and and being detained for uh gun gun-related charges. So there's definitely a correlation between the two, um and then you can tie mental health um into this as well. So just wanted to make that statement and make make that clear that um we're working with the youth on the preventative side, providing credible messenger mentoring to and the curriculum we we're currently using, the Healthy, Wealthy and Wise Curriculum, was created to essentially curb gun violence. It was created in Oakland, California by a gentleman um by the name of David Mohammed. And uh when they created this curriculum, it was for the likes of uh curbing the gun violence in Oakland for that youth population. Uh, but then also the immediate need I see uh I see right now in terms of the the gun violence we're seeing on the adult side with the adult population, um that's more of an immediate concern that we we're looking to uh looking to address um from an immediate intervention standpoint.
Thank you.
So it does seem like for this initiative that we are looking at the council funds and obviously with our off-budget cycle requests, that can be limiting. But when we get into the next discussion, the A R P would be another viable source of funds in addition to whatever council may want to take of its own funds. Is that a good summary of where we are? From options standpoint, is there any other options that we're not talking about? Brian's like, no.
Not that not that are coming, not not that are um coming to mind off the top of my head. Um, we're, you know, we're in this process of still trying to close out the the current fiscal year. And as we talked about it at the four o'clock meeting, um there's still a lot of unknowns around the rev- where the revenues are gonna come in and what our final um budget variances are gonna be on both expenditure and revenue side. So I don't want to sit here and say, oh, we have absolutely zero funds um uh that we could potentially look at as far as the um um general fund budget. But at this point, given that we're at the last meeting in um June, we're, you know, we've run out of time to be able to do um two readings to be able to move these funding. Um, but um I just, so I'm I'm trying to come up with something off the top of my head here and I have to take off this. But, you know, honestly, um the most immediate uh source of previously appropriated funds is the council um strategic initiative dollars.
So if we approved each of these at fifty thousand um at the off-cycle and we find out later that one of the programs cannot apply for the remainder through the ARPA funds or something, can we come back? And re-appropriate some more money from the strategic investment?
Um, I I'm unaware, I'm unaware of a reason why we couldn't do that. Um, I might have to defer to the the city attorney on this. If there's any legal reasons why we can't appropriate funds and then come back um in a separate fiscal year and appropriate additional funding. Um, but to my knowledge, if we appropriate a first round and then we're looking towards potentially the ARPA funds for for additional funding for these programs and they're not eligible, then um I would, I believe that whatever funds carryover from FY twenty one into FY twenty two would be available for you to reallocate towards whatever programs you see fit, whether it be one of these two programs or or another um request that may come before you.
Oh, we s- and that we're talking about the later in the year, uh what what is the date that 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 would be possible? Because I, go ahead.
No, 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 continue.
No, because I'm just looking at this project cost budget and you are talking about a the request to and I'm specifically right now talking about the Peace in the Street. Um, because I think if we want it kind of a holistic um response to what's going on, it doesn't require continual police intervention, which right now we're seeing that we need both. Um, and I think what we're trying to move towards is not having to use um you know, C P D in this way, we're in a prevention type of um format. Then these are besides two um items on here, we are always talking about reporting and evaluation. And as far as everyone knows, you know, past, I have always advocated so that we can know whether what we're funding working. Um, there are only two items that don't involve um this organization attempting to hire the individuals to do the work. Um, and so and those two items are about thirty thousand dollars. So a hundred and fifteen thousand is the staff to do the jobs and then the um reporting and um evaluation support so that they can um make sure that we know whether these investments are what we want to invest in in the future. So it looks like that at fifty thousand dollars, we would potentially and I know organizations can do what they choose to, you know, in line with the mission they apply for, change this, but um like one staff position and the reporting on on that um position.
Because timing is a critical piece, at least I know with the other item that we're gonna discuss next in terms of just trying to capture at the time of greatest need, which is going into, obviously, in the next one we'll talk about in the school year. Um, so I guess the question is, is what we're able to do within our kind of scope right now enough for them to initiate and at work and 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 then for us then to be able to be in a position, as as I think Mister Boyle has kind of put an email to us earlier today, that will be additional funds, at least for one of the programs that we feel somewhat confident we can allocate those funds for. Um, but just not to disrupt like the progress that needs to be made in terms of hiring these folks and getting everyone up to speed. And so I'm less aware of the impact it has to have. Um, not full funding for the Peace in the Streets, because we're not really clear on when that would even be possible. Um, whereas I'm pretty clear that, you know, it is, there is a time consideration and there is a certain amount to make this other project, this other initiative really successful. Um, so I'm not sure if Rob or or Derek wanted to speak to just some of that. In terms of if we can't fund fully, where does that leave us specifically with this first initiative?
You mute it.
Afternoon or evening, I should say. Um, I I'd say it's in terms of uh if it if the if it's not fully funded, um, you know, with the way our organization is structured, we can move forward with some of these initiatives. Um, you know, hoping that maybe there may be some further funding down the line. But um in order to really maximize, I guess, um to keep the momentum going and maximize what we're able to do as far as scaling out and having a broader touch, um, it would be beneficial to have the full funding uh for all the initiatives. But if not, um, we can essentially work with that, I guess.
And if I could speak up a little bit, this is uh from my camera. This is Marques S. Tolbert. How you doing? Good evening, everybody. Uh, a few of you guys know me, a few of you don't. Uh, my name is Marques S. Tolbert. I'm the client partner navigator here at the local fund funds, the local nonprofit here in town. Um, and I get, I'm a part of this organization as well, the pitch, the peace in the streets. So the initiative that you guys are talking about is the initiative that me and myself, Nicholas Fagans, are came on board under Conscious Capitalists. Um, so I just want to speak in a little bit more detail of what we do. I don't know, I haven't spoken to none of you guys personally about what it is we do internally, um what we have been doing over the past year and some change now since the pandemic hit. We really hit the grounds with happy Saturdays. I apologize, I got a duplicate video just popped up.
I think the video may be on our end. We are, um, our communication team is trying out some technology, so.
Oh, that's totally fine, that's totally fine. Um, so yeah, so I now also work with Redemption Youth Mentoring. I'm out of Chesterfield, Virginia. That's what I have on today. So I don't, I'm not only a community member, a community activist and activist and work for the fund fund, also work for redemption mentoring. So I mentor kids as well as adults. So I bring a different component to the conscious capitalists and the peace in the streets, um which we all do bring something individually collectively to make this a holistic approach, what we're doing. Um, we're definitely dealing with kids and we're definitely dealing with people with mental illness and mental health. Um, that's what we started with the resource hotline. I don't want to be sporadic here and jump all over the different things, but I've been on this call for over an hour now and I really wanted to talk uh to you guys personally about what it is, what we're trying to do. Um, and actually what it is, we're already doing um in our community, right? And it's working. Um, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have jumped on um just to speak to about nothing. We're actually doing action-oriented work here, week in, week out, with our hotline. And we call it a resource hotline because it, once again, I can affiliate what I do at my jobs to help the community out because I'm already affiliated with FAR, the different community places, so I know about jobs. I'm on the network uh Network to Work Advisory Committee Board with uh Ridge and Frank Scalachi. So I'm pl- I'm plugged in different other nonprofits and different avenues where I can help individuals holistically, not just in one forum, but holistically, where I can help with childcare, help with job employment. And that's all through the resource uh the resource line um that we currently have operational now. And so far, we had over seventy something calls from different type of resources, from mental illness breakdown to people needing an Uber and a Lyft and a ride to get away from a domestic violence, to people called to neighbors and neighborhoods um calling and asking us to come check on somebody in their neighborhood who's walking around, who they suspect and having mental challenges or so mental struggles, just because we're in a pandemic, guys. So a lot is going on outside of these meetings, outside of these doors, and I'm pretty sure a lot of you are privy to, right? And everybody just don't want, don't want to call the law. It's really concerned citizens out there who rather call us, who rather call other agencies than the police department because we all know once the police arrive on the scene, that aggression or that passive aggression or whatever have you, or that traumatic or trauma from the past might surface again, right? Um, so when we're called on the scene, and we have a couple incidents where this happened, you know, we call on the scene, so we come with a calm, understanding, not no badge, not no gun, not multiple cars, just with a conversation to just see where you're at. And had most of the time, people just want to talk and all you there do is just to listen. Um, so I don't want to get too far into that, but that's just some of the examples that have been happening so far. And we have been coming through and taking care of those uh those situations when they call, literally like this in the snap of our fingers. Um, it's been cases, even other agencies have reached out to us. So it's not just community members, it's not just residents, it's other agencies um that had heard about us, who saw us on the news, who saw us in the paper, right? Who says, you know what, I'd rather call that guy. And it was crazy, uh sad sad bar, um, one of the neighbors in the neighborhood who who decided to call us. I wound up talking to her after the incident got resolved, I took care of the guy, took him to get something to eat. We sat down, had a whole meeting, right? But I didn't just stop there. I wanted to go back to the neighborhood and talk to the young lady who called us, right? Uh, and she talked to me, came outside, she was like, you know what? It wasn't me, it was my husband. He saw your guy, he saw the the number on the news and wrote it down, just just saw the news and just wrote it down and and saw if anything like this happens, he can go to us. So we didn't even know about it until we saw the guy and he said, you know what, don't call the police. Nah, um, we don't know what's his issue is, we don't know what his struggle is, and that's when they called us. So that just gave you an example of type of stuff that we've been. So that just gave you an example of type of stuff that we've been having and dealing with. And not just the resource line, not just helping individuals with mentoring, we also do Happy Saturdays. And that's another initiative that we started in the Peace in the Streets. And that's been going on since the pandemic hit. And that's when me and Nicholas Fagans came in.
Tess, not to, uh, I don't want to tell my camera, because I may freeze. But I can give a little spill on what we do for. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to give a rundown of Happy Saturdays. And um it's, our goal at Happy Saturdays is to continue to build healthy relationships within the inner city communities uh by providing useful resources. One of our most effective forms of outreach is by providing our neighborhoods with free happy meals. Uh, we've also provided meals from local minority restaurants during the pandemic. This has allowed us to bring in other community partners who may have had trouble reaching the same community members. We've now been able to bring voter registration, mental health awareness amongst other resources into the communities. As part of Happy Saturdays, I've, I've been contacted or, or worked with Wild Rock Regent and Shelters for helping emergency frontline foods, uh, who else? Um, Charlottesville Community Cares, and that's just to assist in our Happy Saturday operations. I'm also a part of PB and J's Strategic Planning Team to help advise a, a plan to tackle neighborhood hunger amongst uh other relatable issues. And before I go on, I just want to say that this is all self-funded. So this is just what we've been doing out of our pockets for almost the past two years. All over the country, balance other negative behaviors spawned when there's a lack of activities or programming for our youth. So in Charlottesville, Phyllis Boyd, I've connected with the director of Frost Spring Beach Club, uh, Robin Reisen and Bonnie Gordon, the equity center to provide transportation. And my personal best, well, just uh to get West Haven members and essential court uh youth residents to, to attend Frost Spring Beach Club for free. Conversations with Ms. Reisen, it has also led to possibly transforming Frost Springs Beach or Reisen our hours to provide our city youth with a positive alternative rather than just hanging out in their neighborhoods. So that's a spill of where we all was on our Happy Saturdays initiative right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And what I'm hearing and what I know um already, so I'm not going to, you know, not acknowledge that I know most of these things are happening and um follow like the Facebook posts and Facebook comments. And um I think what's important here is that you're hearing that the work is already being done. So of course, they'll probably continue it. But I think if we are trying to align with um what we say we want to happen here and we know how hard it is for startups that are run by black individuals for them to get funding and the challenges that are tied to that. And that, and acknowledging black um nonprofit, run nonprofits, because that's what we're dealing with here. But any non-white nonprofit um to receive um funding is just a challenge. And I've been saying this the entire time I've been on council and even before then, how do we get the individuals who are most likely to lead us to the results that um we're actually seeking? How do we get them um, you know, on a stable foundation? And as we know, with the mentoring with some of our school, younger individual during the school year, that this was an organization that responded to some of the needs of students who weren't doing well um during the pandemic. So whatever we can do to figure out um, you know, how to, you know, support them, you know, fully, I definitely support that. And also just want to toss out there that we will be together um for the interviews and hoping that this may be something we can do a second reading on at the interview, you know, that day, since we'll all be together instead of waiting until the July meeting.
We're also together tomorrow. Just so we all are aware, we all are together tomorrow for Back Here with Kaki for the Vibrant Community Funds Work Session. And I also think just hearing from, just the counts right now, just that this work is, is not, you know, a singular focus. Um, it's touching so many facets and it actually gets me more encouraged that there might be opportunities to use some of these, this other funding source. Um, just looking at the scope of what's being described, um, it's much broader than, for, for both initiatives than, than any one thing. So I'm certainly support that we do a weekend as a council um in the most immediate, but also just make sure that we, we continue to, to evaluate what other funding sources. And I'm also a firm believer that when public dollars come through, that there are, there are private dollars that, that can follow.
I'd like to interconnect. Um, I just wanted to, wanted to raise a, a question because I haven't really heard from uh other city council members. So I was just wondering if there were, you know, any other input outside of uh Nikaya, Heather and uh Cena.
Well, I mean, let me just say, I've, I've been uh impressed with the stuff that I've seen so far. I think the need is crucial. And I, I want to see what we can do to help. And I want to see what you guys can do with the help that we can give and that others may be able to give to you as well, because the work is badly needed.
Yeah, and as others have said, um, you know, the issue of the rise in gun violence, as well as the other work that's going on, have been focuses for the council for the entire time I've been on council and before that and struggling to figure out how to make investments that can make a difference. And I think the work that you all have been doing is definitely a critical part of that. And there's a clear um track record and plan for how these investments can make a measurable impact in the community. Really, the only questions I have just relate to, you know, these off-cycle budget requests are only matching part of your initial request and just trying to figure out, is there ways through ARP or other ways um to ensure that uh, you know, it's able to be fully funded, so you're able to fully execute um sort of the, uh, the plan you've outlined and the applications to us. And again, as was already discussed, it sounds like using ARP potentially sounds like a bigger opportunity with the second request rather than the first one. Um, but that's really the biggest question I have.
And I have, I have actively talked to a number of people to like try to nail down if we can use ARPA money for gun violence. And everyone I have talked to is under the impression that we should be able to. Now, obviously, that wasn't the Treasury, which is who makes the final decision on that. But that's why I was just wondering if, if we did the fifty thousand, if we approved the fifty thousand now and we find out that we can't um support that, the remainder of the need um with ARPA money, can we then relook at this proposal adding more to it later?
And I wanted to uh ask a question of, um, potentially of Ms. Robertson um on this. Are, um, this is the, a resolution allocating previously appropriated funding? And so typically, those have been one-reading resolutions. And I'm just, um, I'm just trying to see if there was something with this particular request that um led it to being a two-reading resolution since we're, since we're allocating funding um from the council strategic initiatives that was previously um appropriated, then which may resolve some of the, the timing issues um should a decision be made this evening?
Let me check, the general rule that's correct, if, if the money being allocated here is already part of the annual appropriated city budget, um, because it was the subject of the annual appropriation. And if it's not the subject of a, a specific appropriation, so it wasn't previously, you're not, um, you're not adding to an appropriation that was previously approved. Um, so if, if this is just moving money around within the budget, that should be correct. It should only require um one reading. Let me look, let me look that up just to be sure. But I think that's, that's how we've been approaching it.
Mayor Walker, would it be possible for Kaki just to introduce the other item just so that we kind of have all the information in front of us? Sorry.
So the second request being made by Conscious Capitalist Foundation um is for two hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars in support of uh an out-of-cycle funding request to provide intensive mentoring and support to youth referred by Lugo McGinnis Academy. Uh, between forty and fifty youth would be served, given uh full funding for this proposal over the course of a year. Again, using an approach to mentoring uh called credible messengers, people who use their lived experience as an opportunity to build trusting, authentic relationships with students engaged in the program. Credible messenger approach is associated with the same positive outcomes I described before, which has increased engagement in services and programs, reduction in rearrests and violations, increased compliance with court and school conditions and improved collaboration between stakeholders and the broader community. Using credible messengers, Conscious Capitalist Foundation engages a transformative mentoring curriculum and mo, program model called Healthy, Wealthy and Wise, which Mr. Gray mentioned before, which has been identified as a promising practice by the National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform. It's important to note that the principal or the primary administrator of Lugo McGinnis has written a letter of support in, in favor of this program and has, is prepared to make the necessary referrals and work collaboratively with Conscious Capitalist Foundation in uh connecting youth in need to youth uh to uh credible messengers from CCF who can provide this intensive mentoring.
Thank you. And just based on just feedback from um the, the reference to Lugo McGinnis as well as with Mr. Gray and Mr. Rush, I just, hearing the stories of those that have been impacted, I can't imagine this not being something that can be tied to the pandemic as a even higher need than it normally would be pre-pandemic. It's just, it's really critical at this juncture that, that this type of need is, is met. And I just, I can't imagine us not being able to kind of get over the hurdle um with the ARP funds to be able to, to fund that with those funds as well, in addition to whatever we can do this evening with council funds.
I agree. I think it's a very easy um uh connection to make between uh, particularly for young people who've been out of school and virtual space for a long time, disconnected from their friends um and disconnected from traditional social supports for both family and individuals. I think community resilience and community mental health are really easy to tie back to COVID. I think it's just one more step to get to gun violence. And I, what I've heard from those who have been reading the regulations is that that feels like one step too far for the ARPA funds based on those folks. I, again, have not been the one reading those regs, but um, but I think it's a much easier uh argument to make to tie this to the pandemic.
Mr. Gray and Mr. Rush, any comments on this?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to add, just, and just from an organizational standpoint, you know, we believe in, in long-term sustainability and being a staple in the community. We've invested in uh the systems uh to be um self-sustaining or self-sufficient long-term. Uh, we've built relationships uh on a national scale when it comes to this credible messenger uh approach. We're a part of a larger coalition that provides us uh technical assistance um and spreading this credible messenger approach uh across the country. So it is something that won't be a one-off. It is something that is, is sustainable long-term. And we believe that it'll be something that uh will ha, enable us to be uh a staple in this community uh when it comes to changing the conditions and some of the outcomes that um that our youth have been experiencing in the area.
And the only um question that I um have, and I should have sent it earlier. So uh I said this before during another session of the agenda. But in case we can um, like we can figure out a way to fund the peace in the streets fully and support a portion or all of this. But if not, in terms of the collaboration with the school system, was there any conversation around them about potential funding?
Yeah, so we had several conversations with uh the school system. They don't have any money in their budget to support uh this, this project. And so that's just essentially what we landed on, um, which is why we um submitted the proposal to city council.
All right, thank you.
So I guess the question is, are we in a position that council wants to support both at the levels that we can do within our off-budget requests and then work through the ARP for additional funding um down the road? Hopefully in the not-too-distant future.
And I'm also in, Vice Mayor McGill's question is if it's possible for us to, is it fifty thousand dollars total or fifty thousand dollars at one time? And then how is it possible to review that and see if council is willing to, you know, look at the possibility of changing that?
So I will speak to the second part of your question. Um, as part of the agency work session tomorrow, one of the things we, uh, one of the items we have brought up is the outside, um, or, excuse me, the off-cycle funding request process. This was a council um policy that was adopted. And so um I believe we'll, we'll look at that and council could change and read, and adopt a new policy regarding this. Obviously, there would be, as we would go to make changes to the policy, we would have to consult with the city attorney and other things to make sure we're doing everything that we need to on, on the, the legal side with, with these types of requests. So there is that potential to change that moving forward. Um, as far as the um funding fifty thousand dollars now in the current fiscal year and then potentially in the future fiscal year, I would have to, I mean, I, I believe that's part, written in the policy somewhere as well. And I'm, I'm, don't have that directly in front of me right now to be able to read through that and really um digest whether or not that is possible. But I, um, we could certainly explore that um as part of potential policy changes as well. But again, we, you know, we could, that would not be something we could do um immediately tonight, I don't believe. So we would need to look at that.
And I think we don't want to get into the business of changing policies based on who, who is presenting the funding request. I think we want to look at a poli, you know, a policy that works for what has been coming before us off-cycle in the past few years since that policy was developed, just for some consistency um there and not be able to, you know, just make decisions based on which agents, you know, the agency. And so that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, because we've had a couple, this has come up a couple times.
Well, I think, Mayor Walker, when you and I, for our first year on council, actually, the policy was approved to go from either ten or fifteen up to the fifty. It was much lower than, than it even is now um because there was just concern that it wasn't giving council enough flexibility. And so um we're in a even different circumstance now, and I, I agree.
Also, um, how much do we have left in the strategic investigative? And I guess before these requests, and then if we approve these requests, it would be less a hundred thousand?
So currently, um, there's three hundred and twen, just over three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars left in that account, um, three hundred and twenty-seven, five oh seven, um, is the current accounting I have for, for those funds.
Thank you very much. I mean, and this is why I'd like to see if we can. I mean, and this is why I'd like to see if we can, if we can manage the ARPA funds to cover the remainder of the need, um, first. Because these funds are so much more flexible to give small nonprofits, give immediate need quickly.
Okay, so, um,
Do we get the resolution on what we can, the answer on whether we can do all this tonight in one night? These other two things, there's the, the things that are on our agenda?
Well, I'm sorry, I just, I wish I had, um, wish I had a little more time to look at this. So the answer to whether there are one or two readings required just depends on a number of different circumstances. The city code says you're supposed to have two readings for any appropriation in excess of $1,000. Um, there's another section of the city code that addresses, um, that says that, um, items that aren't provided for in your annual budget require a special appropriation by the council. In this situation, you appropriate money each year to your special initiatives fund, um, but you don't, it's, it's sort of just a placeholder. You haven't really approved it to be spent for any particular purpose. And that's what an appropriation is. An appropriation is an authorization for money to be used for a specific purpose. There, we recently, um, with, with both Ryan and Ms., Ms. Hamel, we talked about circumstances in which, um, city council sometimes, um, has already, um, um, sort of, provided in the annual, um, budget appropriation or otherwise. Um, what happens as, as revenues come in, they're sort of automatically, deemed to be appropriated back into a particular fund. So, long story short, I think we should probably use the two readings, just to make sure that, that the, um, approval is valid.
And to Mayor Walker's point about Wednesday being another opportunity where council will be convening to do interviews, even maybe Thursday too, we're still figuring all that out. What would our notice need to be, because we are at Monday night right now, in order to, to have a second reading this week?
The main requirement is that, um, let's see. The three days have to intervene between, um, introduction and passage of the, uh, um, the resolution. So it would have to be, um, Thursday at the earliest.
Could it be Thursday morning?
I guess, I don't know.
Depends on how long this meeting goes.
I, I suppose, I mean, your agenda was posted, I don't know if it's deemed introduced when you actually called the item up on your agenda or when you, you actually opened your meeting tonight. So sure, let's do Thursday morning. That would be close, as close as I can get it without, um, you know, hearing it by the, the minute or the hour.
I'm sorry to ask. I just know we already had that time blocked off potentially for some other things, so.
Yeah, it just, it's, it's always helpful to have something enough in advance so you don't have to do it so quickly. But that's not really the way, um, a lot of these things work, so.
Right, and the, the notice hasn't gone out yet for the Thursday or Wednesday meetings because it was just decided today, so we still have work to do to prepare for the, the notice.
So as long, if you go ahead and put it on whatever agenda you have for Thursday, then, um, just have it as a specific agenda item. Okay?
Yep.
All right, um, so are we clear? Because I'm,
We need to vote now or do we need to vote on Thursday?
Thursday.
We need to vote ne-, we need to vote now for the first reading, right?
We don't vote for first readings, but we should give a signal if there's any concern with it.
For Thursday, yes.
Right. I'm comfortable with taking this up formally on Thursday for a vote.
Likewise.
Oh, I'm all for it.
Okay. All right, so that'll at least help with the timeframe so that they won't have to wait until our, until we return in July, the end of July. All right, and I hope, thank you all for all that you do. I hope that you heard the, um, interest in us figuring out additional funding outside of these, um, the two $50,000, um, allocations. And, uh, we will, you know, work on those and see, see where, where we get. But we hope this is enough to get you all, um, started. And thank you all for doing, um, the work, um, starting the work and assisting the community even without the funding. But we know funding is important, so I'm not saying continue to work for free. Well, you know, support, do support that the entire community benefits from, um, because I think it's also important that all of you are also working. I think Marta said it, um, but because you have been doing this work on, you know, like the side job, which is not really side, you all have been also trying to support yourself with other work. And so it's, um, I'm hoping that we can help change that.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rush. Have a good night.
Thank you. You all have a good night too. All right, so now we'll take a break. I'm joking. Nobody, no break. So is there any other, um, business? No? Okay. Any questions for the city manager? No questions. Um, okay, Mr. Weller, the Matters by the Public.
Thank you, Mayor Water, Mayor Walker, uh, my neat water. If you're in the audience, you'd like to address council, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. First up is Wolfgang Keppley. Wolfgang, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Uh, this is Wolfgang Keppley. I live in Fry Spring neighborhood in Charlottesville. Um, I learned last week that Charlottesville's ADA coordinator has left their position. And I believe this makes five ADA coordinators come and gone the past five years. So I wanted to request that the city makes hiring for this position, as well as retaining this, for this position, um, a priority going forward. So I was excited, uh, to learn in late 2020 that the city had finally hired for this position, which I think was left vacant for about half a year. I was also excited to hear that an aspect of this position would be to coordinate updating the ADA transition plan, a plan which is now eight years old and needs to be updated. The ADA transition plan, um, not only ensures that Charlottesville programs, services, and activities are ADA compliant, but it also highlights and commits to areas where Charlottesville can lead beyond legal requirement to ensure access and inclusion for all Charlottesville residents with disabilities. The ADA coordinator is critical to moving this work forward and ensuring that residents of the city have a clear point of contact and someone to respond to their requests. Hiring for this position should be prioritized as well as to work on addressing issues and retaining this position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else in the audience who'd like to address council, click the raise hand icon. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. Do not see any additional hands, Mayor Walker.
All right. All right, councilors, any final? Mr. Bowles, any final? All right, so meet in adjournment.
Hope everyone takes a little bit of time.
Oh, we'll be back tomorrow.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Don't be, don't be celebrating yet. We'll be back a couple more times this week.
Good night.
Good night.